I keep roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Kell Crane.
Here.
Jordan Delon.
Here.
Tabitha Denny.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges. Dusty Mable.
Here.
Kenny Smith.
Here.
Brick Wall.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Are you going to lead us in the word of prayer? Lead us in the word of prayer.
Okay. Everyone bow, please. Most heavenly gracious Father, thank you again for this opportunity for each and every one of us to come here tonight to this meeting here, pray that you'll bless each and every family here, and also guess bless each of the members as they make decisions tonight, for all these blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
So I stand to the place of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, item number five on the agenda, motion to approve or and dispense reading of the minutes for August ninth, 2022, as printed. Do I hear a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Crane. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Woodley made it second. Roll call, or can I do this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We had to go by roll call during, you know, okay. Uh, number six, motion to approve of dispense readings for minutes of September the sixth. The special call meeting is printed. Do I hear a motion to approve that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number seven, motion to amend from wording Vice EMA Director to Deputy EMA Director, Will Maxwell. In other words, we got the wording wrong, I guess, what he's saying. So we need a motion to approve that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Is that Jordan?
Yes, sir.
You second?
I'll second.
Woodley? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item number eight, Committee A report. Mr. Crane?
Committee A met on October eleventh, 2022. Roll call, all members were present, Terry Hodges, Jordan Delon, Terry Hickey, Tabitha Denny, and myself, Kell Crane. Also present was Mayor David Sullivan. We elected chairman for Committee A. That'd be myself, Kell Crane, and co-chairman was elected Tabitha Denny. The Health Department remodeled approval or disapproval. Most of y'all have paperwork on the renovation project, state funding, local funding, and federal funding. Motion was made by Mr. Hickey to have sent the full commission for discussion, seconded by Mr. Hodges.
What's going on with that?
Come up and explain to everybody a little bit.
So I spoke to Committee B as well, so everyone should be in the loop with what we're asking. But tonight, I gave you all, he handed out a piece of paper, we're just voting on the two ninety-five. So the two ninety-five is the first part of the entire package, and that is so that we can get this federal-funded electric and plumbing started. With that, if it's a yes on those things, what you're saying yes to is we're starting the asbestos study that we talked about, is if asbestos comes back, we can use appropriations to pay for any damages that's occurred or anything like that. And if it's over the amount that we've allocated, then you all can come back and say, no, we're not going to do any further anything with this funding. And then after that, once the testing is done and we're ready to start, the plumbing and electric is the two ninety-five, that funnels through like a special needs project, so it funnels through the county. You would have a monthly invoice, pay that invoice, and then it's reimbursed back from the state within thirty days. So tonight, you're saying yes to, you agree to start the process of the two ninety-five. So the other sections that we talked about will come later, but this is the one that has to be, so we can start with the asbestos study and get those things going.
The sheet, the sheet that was given to us in the committee, it says three ninety-five.
Yeah, so the other hundred thousand, which is for the drug room, that's also federal funding, but that's not in this first, that's not in this first start. Yep.
But that's on both floors, right?
Can you refresh your memory, what was the amount of the holdback that was going to cover the asbestos? Was it twenty-four, twenty-six?
So your appropriations is around twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
And if, if the cost of removing the asbestos is more than that, like once we've agreed to it, if it's more than that, will the county be required to make up the?
That's up to you, yes. But if you do not wish to do that, that's also up to you. But my, from what I've been told, and again, I don't know anything about asbestos, since we have cinder block buildings, they think what they will find will be in the pipes or around the piping, which is what we're replacing. So hopefully, when they do the study, all the things that they find that need to be replaced are what we're replacing with this funding anyway.
If I understand what you said, if, if we vote yes tonight, we're not obligated to pay an additional amount for the asbestos, but we can if it, if it comes up, but we're not obligated to it at this point?
Correct. You're not obligated to pay anything at this point. What we're saying yes to is we're agreeing to start the process of the study. The study is paid out of grant funding, but they have to know that you're agreeing to the process. So when that study comes back, and let's just say it's ten thousand dollars, if you all wish to go ahead and approve that, that will be withheld appropriations, which is fine, and we'll pay that ten thousand dollars, and then we'll move forward with the other two ninety-five through federal funding.
Thanks, that was very clear.
Anything else?
This, uh, this will be bid out.
Yes. Yeah, so that's why it takes so much time. That's one of the reasons why this is the first piece, because it says August of 2024, that includes a year extension. So technically, we're supposed to have all the money spent by March of 2023, but they're going to allow us an extension with this money. But it will take us quite a while to get the bid process, you know, it's at least a month for a bid process after the asbestos study. Yeah. Any, county rule is over, anything over twenty-five hundred dollars. So we have to follow county rules on bid processes. State is a little bit different, so my county in Cumberland, I think ours is over five or ten thousand, so it's a little bit higher.
This is county building, is this going to be city inspector on this, or who's going to be the?
I'm sorry.
Who's going to be the inspector on the building as we go? Is it going to be the city, or county, or what?
So from what I've been told, now, this is my first go around with this, that we have a monthly meeting with our contractors and all of the inspectors, so I'm assuming that's going to be a state inspector, but I can check on that. I'm not going to say that's a hundred percent accurate, but I do know that we have a walkthrough every month, we have to check off all of the work before we will pay any invoices. I do know that. And that's included with someone from the mayor's office as well, that's not just myself. If you tell me a pipe looks good, I'm going to say okay.
The inspectors that will have to be involved in this will be the city of Spencer, him and your wiring inspector.
I'm assuming it's going to be like any other building.
They'll be wiring inspector through the state.
Yeah, I'm assuming it's going to be like any other building. I'm assuming we're also going to have a state inspector as well, just because of what kind of funding it is.
Action on this deal?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Grissom. I mean, Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges. Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
How much? Thank you.
Next is the CDBG, which is the Community Development Block Grant. This is a letter from Mr. Archer, Director of the CBDG. Is used to award funds to be able to purchase breathing air compressors, extraction equipment, firefighting nozzles, and rope rescue equipment. Motion was made by Ms. Denny to bring the full commission and seconded by Mr. Delon. Is, is that part of wheel back there?
Yes, yes.
Would you come up and explain that a little bit more?
Well, this is just some of the equipment we're purchasing for CDBG. It allows us to use a corporate or cooperative buying agreement, that's what this is, you're approving a cooperative buying agreement. We're just tagging on to another bid, saves time and money on bidding process. For some of the items, we were bidding some of the items because there wasn't a cooperative bidding agreement for those. Just allows us to make those purchases off of a prior bid. It's on a national level, it's kind of like a state contract, something that's on state contract, but more on a national level.
It's something every year, correct?
Yes, we've done, this is our third CBDG grant, and we have approved this, actually, last time, I didn't know we had to do that, and we did not approve it till after the fact. But we're going about that in the right process this time, after I was made aware of that. So commission just has to approve us, or to approve to allow us to purchase off of that cooperative buying agreement.
So this is resolution, is what it is?
Yes, it's a resolution, just allowing us to make those purchases from that cooperative buying agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve, go forth with this.
Mr. Crane, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Smith? Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
All right, next section is the UT Extension Amendment. Mr. Binkley, the UT extension budget needs the following amendments made. Number one, eleven thousand one hundred and thirty-six needs to be moved from line item five seven one zero zero dash two zero four to line item five seven one zero zero dash two zero seven. Number two, seven thousand and ninety-nine dollars needs to be moved, or excuse me, needs to be added to line item five seven one zero zero dash two zero four. And number three, nine hundred and ninety dollars needs to be added to line item five seven one zero zero dash two nine nine. A total of eight thousand and eighty-nine dollars was left out of the UT Extension Van Buren County budget. Motion was made by Ms. Denny and seconded by Mr. Hickey to bring the full commission. I pretty much explained that through that as best, best it could be done. I want to go ahead and, if nobody has any questions, go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and go forth and approve that.
Made the motion, Mr. Crane, you second it, Mr. Chandler. Go ahead.
I had a question, it came up, I don't know if it came up in y'all's Committee A meeting when I was attending, but there was some question of whether there were some amounts that were due back from UT extension, did I misunderstand that? Because there was a question of why we were putting money, taking money off a line, putting money in a line? Or did I? Did I?
As far as I know, Mr. Wall, what was done at the, I guess the last committee, whenever it was put into the budget, lines, money was put in the wrong lines, put in, put in the wrong place. And what we're trying to do now is to put those back in the correct locations, so the money be used correctly, out of the right amendments.
Okay, and so none of this was new money?
No. Is that correct?
Well, there is eight thousand and eighty-nine dollars of new money. So what took place is when the budget, when I went before the Budget Committee and they approved my budget, then when it was inputted into the computer, what, what took place is the money got, the money got moved up a line. So that eleven thousand dollars was supposed to be in the line below it. So once it got moved up, then money got left off. Does that make sense in the budget? You know, everything kind of got moved up, so at the end, some line items did not have any money in it. And I did not catch that until after the budget was already approved by the previous commission. And when I caught it, I brought it, as soon as I found it, I brought it to the attention because UT bills quarterly to the county, and I didn't want the county to get a quarterly bill, go to pay that quarterly bill, and not have any money in that line item. That answer your question, Mr. Wall?
Yes, it does, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next section is the earmark money. County Clerk Lisa Rigsby is requesting a budget amendment in the line, in salary line item, for a salary increase for the deputy county clerk of four thousand nine hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty cents. Serious attachment with your packet, motion to approve was made by Ms. Denny and seconded by Mr. Hodges. Does anybody have any questions?
And on that paperwork too, can we get a back pay of July first, July first, 2022? It starts the, yes, that's when the year starts.
Yeah, that's right.
Lisa, do you want to explain how that's going to work, just for the public?
Okay. Earmark money, the county clerk does different jobs for the state now, and they pay us to do title printing, scanning, we get so much per title, and every month, we get close to five hundred dollars a month. Well, it goes in an earmark fund that's in a reserve for the county clerk, and what we can do with that money is, the money is used to update our computers, to buy office supplies, which taxpayers' dollars don't have to buy, we can take out of that money that we make monthly, and we've got forty, forty-three thousand sitting there right now, but I'll be buying computers there pretty soon. But it's just a way to keep the office updated. And we, everything, paper, everything we use, we buy it out of that earmark money. But this year, we ended up getting earmark money, three dollars per title that we did. Well, every year, it's, it's over five thousand dollars if you go three dollars per title. So this year, they fixed it where the clerks in different counties can take that money and pay salaries, or her, you know, add employees on. Well, of course, we're a smaller town, and I'm asking for that money that's just going to sit there, to be moved to her salary to give her a increase, because we haven't had an increase. And she's as responsible as I am, carrying the money, doing everything we do every month. So I'm asking for that money to go from that line item to her salary, and that's money that's going to be coming in every year, so it won't be like, next year, we won't get that money, and then I'm expecting the county to pay for it. This is money that's going to sit there, and this is how I want to use it. And I can by law, so.
Thank you. I'll second.
Motion to approve of motion by Commissioner Chandler, second by Commissioner Woodley.
Have we approved them both, correct?
Yes, yes.
And the back pay?
Yes.
Good deal.
Yes, yes, that's, yes, that's.
I just want to make sure that's put in minutes.
Yes, yes. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hodges. I mean, Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Resolution for trustee office. The trustee office requesting that all property tax bills in the county for real and personal property be, to be round to the nearest dollar amount. This shall be accomplished by rounding amounts ending in one cent to forty-nine cents down to the nearest dollar, and amounts ending in fifty cents to ninety-nine cents to the nearest dollar. Motion to move the full commission was made by Ms. Denny and seconded by Mr. Hickey. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve that.
I'll, I'll second.
Commissioner Crane made the motion, Commissioner Wall second. Roll, roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next section is the Highway Department paving. This is just a letter from the Highway Department, just giving us upcoming year of 2022, 2023, of what areas are going to get paved. I mean, we have to make a motion?
No action needed.
I think it just needs to be acknowledged.
I mean, just, yeah, we did, that's what we did, is it not? By reading it up, we did, we acknowledged it.
To add to the minute.
Yes, to add to the.
Yeah, that's right.
Next section is a payment approval for Chuck Burgess. Should have APR money, capital projects for line items. Should be line item number seven, the three thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents, and the payment was approved by the last commission to use the ARP money in line item one seven one dash five eight eight three three dash five two three. Motion was made by Mr. Hickey to approve and go ahead and pay Mr. Burgess, and it's seconded by Ms. Denny, and I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve that.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Denny, motion made by Mr. Crane, second by Mr. D, Ms. Denny, excuse me. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Next is the payment approval for Farmer and Morgan. Payment for Farmer and Morgan was approved by the last commission to use the ARP money in line item one seven one dash five eight eight three five dash three three five. Is a total of eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents. Motion to go ahead and pay remaining balance to Farmer and Morgan was made by Mr. Hickey and seconded by Mr. Delon. I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve.
Need a second?
I'll second.
Who's that? Mr. Delon. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mable.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Brick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Committee A had, all right, next, Committee B report.
A Committee B, we met October fourth, after the call to order from Mayor Sullivan. We had a roll call, everyone was in attendance, myself, Michael Chandler, Kenny Smith, Brick Wall, and Michael Woodley. We had, we elected a chair and a co-chair. I was elected as chairman of Committee B, and Brick Wall was elected as co-chair of our Committee B. As we've already discussed, about the Health Department, Ms. Slavin presented to us what y'all have already been presented with, and we'd already voted on, with the monies involving the remodel of the Health Department. The resolution for a VA, the VA loan, the resolution for VA loan for Van Buren County to opt out for building codes in the county. Motion was made by Michael Woodley, seconded by Michael Chandler, and passed on to the full commission.
I had a question on that.
Go ahead.
Um, because we did pass it on to the full commission. One of the questions I have, or the concern I have, is the language in this resolution seems to go beyond what we're being asked, if, if I'm tracking this. The mayor was saying that the VA needs something from the county to confirm that we don't have any building, building codes or building ordinances? They wanted, they wanted something in writing for the purposes of VA loans, is that right?
Yes, that, the reason this came up right here is, there was some fellow that had applied for a VA loan. Well, during his house construction there, he was needing a statement for that the house is being inspected, you know, to make sure it's built properly. Well, Van Buren County, outside of the city limits, does not have a buildings code. So therefore, with his loan, he was in jeopardy with it, because he came to the county, and that's all this, this paper is for, is so that anyone outside of the county that's tries to apply for a VA loan, that they can, they can come, we can give them this letter here, stating that, to take back to their bank, you know, that this, we don't have it in, in their possession there to do the, the inspections. But what they can also do, if they want to have an inspection, I call the state, and they said they can have a person, you can buy a permit and get someone to come and inspect it. Even though we're opting out, you know what I'm saying, if a person so desired, they could have their own inspection. And that's the, the whole purpose of this is just to help the veterans if they so wanted to go this route.
I understand that part. I guess my, my question is, this resolution, the way it's worded, says that tonight, we're deciding. says that tonight, we're deciding that in Van Buren County, we're not gonna have. It says, we hereby exempt one and two family dwellings, and we hereby elect to opt out. I thought we already don't have them.
We don't have them, but it's just making the statement for anybody that we, I guess, giving notice that we don't have, we, do you want to?
Why wouldn't a letter from, from you, for example, just stating the fact that we don't have them?
Well, because I wanted to make sure that it was legal, in case somebody from a bank. I, I requested her to do this so that if there's any discussion further than, it was drawn up by our county attorney, if they had any questions, then they could ask him, you know what I'm saying, for whatever questions they might have.
This resolution, though, and, um, already, then, provided in the statute, the statute provides that.
It allows us to take the exemption, but this resolution says tonight, we're deciding that, that in Van Buren County, we're not gonna have, we're gonna opt out of this. And I don't, I don't feel like that decision's in front of us, whether we're going to or not. You're, you're saying there aren't any in place, and we just need to confirm that. But this says, we're deciding not to have any.
Well, this is just to give the banks, a letter to be able to give the banks something that they wanna have.
That makes total sense, and, and I, I understand that. But, I mean, I've seen a letter from Mayor Wilson in a previous administration that says, we don't have any building codes, here you go. So I don't understand why we need a resolution deciding tonight that this commission decides we're exempt, we're, we're not gonna have building codes.
Well, if, if the commission decides that they don't want to have it, they don't have to have it tonight. This is just presented to you as a courtesy for the veterans. That's all this purpose is for. It's, it, it's not nothing, it's just to make a statement, even though you don't agree with it, it's just to make a statement there to show.
Alright, I, I wanna, I wanna support that for the veterans. I'm just concerned that the language is saying we're doing something tonight that we're actually not doing, by deciding this. But, I understand.
Is there any more? Is there, could you make it any more clear? I don't know, I mean, I'm just, so everybody can kinda understand where we're at with this.
... codes authorize the county to exempt one family, two families, whatever. And so this, it's my understanding, really, that this resolution authorizes, basically, authorizing the county to do that. But there's, you don't have building code codes here anymore.
May I ask a question? Is it okay for me to ask a question, Chair?
Not at this time. I, I don't mean.
I'm sorry?
I said, not, we're not taking any questions, audience, from this time, we're still in business.
So basically, what I'm getting, this is just, it's not.
We don't have any codes.
We don't have no codes.
We don't have any codes.
All this is doing is just giving the people that are getting a VA loan paperwork.
If somebody comes up here to our office, we can hand them this letter that they can take back to their bank. That's all this is for, that's, period.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
Do you hear a second?
I'll second.
Who's that? Smith, sorry. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
No.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Alright. Also, what was brought before committee B was a resolution for the hazard mitigation plan.
That's what Mr., uh, Maxwell had.
This is.
It's the same thing.
Different one, you know?
No, it's different.
This is, this is, my, my, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dust.
Uh, for Van Buren County to adopt an updated hazard mitigation plan. Uh, motion was made by Michael Woodley, seconded by Michael Chandler, passed to the full commission. So my understanding of the hazard mitigation plan is pretty much, it's just, in case of emergencies, we have something in place for FEMA, pretty much to get FEMA money. Yeah, go ahead.
Back of, uh, several years ago, the county received a grant to write a hazard mitigation plan, and then it has to be updated, I think it's every ten years. So this is time for that hazard mitigation plan to be updated. Um, it's just been updated with new things, uh, new, um, problems that the county may face. Uh, other than that, it's pretty much the same. Uh, it's an item that we have to have in place if there is a disaster in order to receive federal funds from the government. If there, if there ever is a problem here, or when there is a problem here, uh, if we don't have this in place, then we're not able to receive those funds. And it also, uh, gives us the opportunity to get grant funding to, um, take care of some hazard, uh, mitigate hazards, have, have equipment to mitigate hazards. That, that's basically what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Maxwell.
Can I ask you a quick question? Um, I don't know if I'm reading this right, but it, this seems to say that we have building codes and zoning. You, can you take a look, I may be misreading it, but this is from the, from the plan. Is that what that's referring to?
I believe it should, would say, uh, so we don't have to do any correspondence, it just says, we're, does your jurisdiction force go to correspondence? So I think it probably should have said that, correct?
What about that second one? Okay. Um, if I.
I can make that adjustment if, if, uh, that, that's already been approved. I, I'm not sure how that would affect the plan, it's already been approved by FEMA. Uh, this is kinda the final step. Uh, I can ask about that, if you guys wanna approve it pending changing those two things, uh, we can by all means take care of that. I, I didn't catch it when we went through. Obviously, the one down below it says Spencer, uh, right below it, and they do have, it may just be a typographical error.
You're correct, that's what it says there.
More questions, Mr.?
If y'all wanna approve it pending those adjustments, that's, I mean, I'll send that up, and we'll get it fixed.
I don't need to do that, just.
Motion to approve?
And then, to fix that.
Pending the corrections.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve, or hazard mitigation plan, uh, as long as he gets those fixed and.
I think you'd say motion to approve pending those corrections.
I'll second.
Mr., uh, Mabel made the motion, Chandler seconded, roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
That's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
Item number ten, motion to approve, disapprove, Kell Crane, Terry Hodges, and Kenny Smith to the, to, to the board.
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion to approve was made by Mr. Delon, seconded by Mr. Wall. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Item number eleven, motion to approve or disapprove, Kell Crane, Jordan Delon, and Mike Chandler to Ag Board.
Make a motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Mabel. I hear a second. Second by Mr. Crane. Roll call.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Motion carried, sorry. Item number twelve, of course, we have a letter here resigning from, uh, his position as constable by Mr. Jerry Kirby, so, uh, uh, do I hear a motion? Do we have to have a motion to approve that? I accept. We need a motion to accept his, uh, right, accept his resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept his resignation, Chair.
Motion made by Mr. Crane, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Smith. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Number thirteen, motion to approve or disapprove, notary for Abigail Sullivan, Brandy Noon, and Kim Griston. Do we need to do them one at a time, or can we do them all at once? Anybody have any objections to any of those?
These are all renewals, right?
Abby Sullivan is, this is new for her.
She's newing for Abigail. If nobody has any que, any problem with them, then I need a motion to approve or disapprove for these three individuals for, uh, notaries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve was made by commission woman, Ms. Denny. I need a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Crane. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Item number fourteen, motion to approve bond for Circuit Court Clerk Lavetta Simmons, special commissioner and receiver.
Can I ask what that's for, just explain it?
She is the, uh, cert, new Circuit Court Clerk, right?
They have to have, they have to have, even though they're under our blanket bond, they have to have diff, her and Tina Shockley have to have two different bonds. Tina hasn't received hers yet, which she's okay right now, but, uh, it's gotta be approved and added to the minute. So Lavetta, being new, this is her approval of her second bond.
I understand. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, Chairman.
I'll second.
Who's second?
Mr. Delon.
Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Item number fifteen, approve or disapprove, warning reports for the school, highway clerk, and master in Solly West.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve.
Mr. Delon made a motion to approve, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Woodley. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler. Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Item number sixteen, that man's not here, so we'll skip over it. Uh, number seventeen, motion to approve or disapprove, retail, environmental, and civil engineering service, and dismiss Farmer Morgan services from old landfill site. Does everybody know what's going on there?
So, the, uh, environmental and civil, civil engineering service, that's. Is it Burgess?
It's Burgess, yes. For, for anyone that, that may not know the situation, with the old landfill out there, Farmer Morgan, he, they did some work out there for us. The grass that they used out there is not adequate for this area, because I checked with, with Chris to make sure that it would work, and it would not work. So I called Mr., because also, Mr. Farmer Morgan had, where we, we would need to do an update, or one of his proposals was do an update of the old landfill for another thirty years. Okay, on the thirty years there, he was also saying that we needed to put a new cover on top of the, the base, which is gonna cost between three and four hundred thousand dollars. So I called Mr. Burgess, because he used to be the person that was over this. Well, in nineteen ninety-six, this area here was, landfill was closed. He looked at the reports that Farmer Morgan gave, and he says, you don't have to do anything except keep your wells tested for the next four ye, your four to five years. Well, so I finally got a hold, I ran into a fellow at a meeting the other day that worked with landfills. And I told him, I said, I really need an answer from the state. So this fellow called, the person that was over the state, the man from the state called me, and I'm sorry, I don't have his name here, but I don't. And he talked, me and him talked, and he says, you're off one year on water well testing. Says you will have to test five years instead of four. But he said, also, after that period, you will only have to test once a year, and keep it mowed off. And that was, was his answer to that. And that's the reason that I'm wanting to go with, to retain the environmental services and engineering service versus Farmer Morgan.
Because we feel like Farmer Morgan is just trying to create a problem.
Well, I even had Chris, Chris, you don't elaborate on this any, or, or I pretty much said pretty much what it is. I mean, it's, I'm not an engineer, but my opinion, when, when you're using a grass that don't even grow in your region, and you're charging a, a big price for it, something is wrong with somebody's specs. I mean, that's the best way I can put it.
From us approving the, paying them for that ARP money, that'll go ahead and clear our debt with them, right?
Yes, we, we do owe them, I, and we'll be getting to that, we do need to owe them, pay them what we owe them, because part of that was for.
And we approved that.
For engineering services around the.
What's we owe them?
The fairgrounds, eleven thousand and something dollars.
We've, we've already approved to pay that.
Yeah. Which that payment was already approved, the, the last commission.
It is, it, it's in the ARP money from, from the past.
Yeah.
And we just hadn't paid them yet. And so when he came, he came, when he presented me with, with this stuff here, he came with a bill, said, or telling me that we owe him money. Same way with, well, when I called Burgess. When Mr. Burgess come, we were talking, and he looked at the situation there, and, and were the, uh, what the test, because Chris has got the test at his office there for his person to also check it too, to see what recommendations that we can do to make it better. And during that time there, he says, oh, by the way, I hadn't brought it up to you, but y'all have owed me thirty-five hundred and something dollars for over two year, that, that was not paid. And he said, it would be nice to be paid, but, he said, I come to talk to you today to let you know, you asked me to come and check, it, it wasn't for him to come to get money. You know what I'm saying, it was come there because I asked him to come to, um, check the situation.
Mr. Chairman, I go ahead and make a motion to approve, to go ahead and dismiss Farmer Morgan, and go ahead and start using Mr. Chuck Burgess to start checking the landfill.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Made by, motion made by Mr. Crane, seconded by Mr. Chandler, to, uh, retain environmental and civil engineering service and dismiss Farmer Morgan. Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Yes.
Kell Crane.
Yes.
Jordan Delon.
Yes.
Tabitha Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Dusty Mabel.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
That's all of our, that's all of our agenda, Mr. Mayor, you got anything?
I don't have anything else, no.
Anybody from the audience wanna speak something at this time? Anybody got anything? Motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Ms. Denny made the motion to adjourn, Mr. Crane. Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any adjourn?